Regularly scheduled meeting of the Southern Shore Town Council for November the 7th, 2012 is in order. I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have a moment of silence tonight, I want to mention two people to you. Since our last meeting, we've lost Al Fox, a wonderful gentleman and a longtime contributor to not only our community, to the entire Outer Banks community. And I don't know if, well, some of you know, but Peter McFarland, who normally sits in the second row of the first chair, one of our real longtime firefighters, ninety-two year old, is still suffering at Centerra Hospital in Norfolk from the effects of a stroke. And all of us who know Peter, love Peter, and we certainly are pulling for him. Join me in a moment of silence, please. Council, we have an agenda. Any changes? Suggestions?
Remove, we approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, a second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The consent, oop. Police Chief David Cole.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, it's my honor and my privilege to introduce two of the newest officers to join the Southern Shores Police Department. I'm gonna ask, he goes by Chris, but I'm gonna be official, William Chris McDonald and George Farrell to come up front, please. You can stand right in front of them. Chris McDonald, raise your hand so they know who you are. Good job. Chris comes from the Hampton Roads area of Virginia. He is married to his wife Erin, who was in the audience, with her father, who was the inspiration for Chris to consider law enforcement. Chris's father-in-law is a retired police officer from NYPD. We sponsored Chris just recently, within the last year, through the Basic Law Enforcement Training Academy. And one of the things that's unique about Chris, when I interviewed him and talked with him, I had no idea the wealth of knowledge that he has with the computers and the computer system. And that's kinda nice when things don't go right with the computers in the cars at night when Jennifer's not working. So Chris is gonna be a truly great asset to the town of Southern Shores and its citizens. And we're just very happy to have been able to hire him. George Farrell is the other one, next to him. George is originally from Hatteras Village, where he was raised by his grandparents. He served ten years in the United States Air Force. He was a mechanic on F-15 Eagle jet fighters. He was stationed in Florida and also in Alaska. In nineteen ninety-five, he came back home. He actually started out as a jailer with the Dare County Department of Corrections. He worked for Mano Police Department and also Dare County Sheriff's Office. But he spent the last eleven years with the town of Kill Devil Hills Police Department, where he worked his ranks, worked through the ranks as a patrolman, to an investigator, to a sergeant, and to a lieutenant. He received his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate in two thousand and ten. He is married to his wife, Michelle, who's in the audience. Michelle was actually a police officer in Southern Shores between two thousand and one and two thousand and two, and then she went on to Kitty Hawk Police Department. They also had their eight-year-old daughter, Brianna, who is also in the audience, and they reside in Point Harbor. I would like to welcome them to the town of Southern Shores. They're both gonna be very truly excellent assets to what we're looking for, for our community and for our citizens, and we're proud to have them aboard. Thank you.
We're very proud to have you.
Thank you. Now, what we are gonna do is we're gonna recognize one of our officers. The Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary contacted us a short time ago, and every three months, they like to honor a police officer for outstanding achievements. And they asked us to nominate someone. And we decided that Officer McKeever was more than deserving of such an award and an honor. We didn't tell him what it was about. He had no idea until he walked in and saw it on the agenda, actually, probably. But I would also ask Eddie, Officer McKeever, to come on up. And spokesperson for the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary is Becca Cook, who is Officer Cook with Southern Shores Police Department's wife. She is here representing the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary. Becca, she said she likes to talk in front of you.
As Chief Cole said, my name is Becca Cook. I'm here on behalf of the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary. Just to give you a little bit about the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary and what we do, it was constructed after Sergeant Earl Murray was killed in the line of duty, with hopes of bringing the members and family members of public safety personnel closer together, with the intent of hosting yearly events and fundraisers. If you didn't know Earl, he was fair and honest. His patrol car and uniform were impeccable, and his integrity was beyond reproach. He was an inspiration to others around him and was admired by many. The monies raised by Outer Banks Public Safety go to support the Sergeant Earl Murray Memorial Scholarship Fund and the Sergeant Earl Murray Christmas Fund. Every year, we do a shop with public safety, where we have our officers, firefighters, EMS, shop with children that are selected through the Dare County Social Services Program, and we give them money to two less fortunate children in the community to keep the Christmas spirit alive. The EBPSA is branching out and dedicating our time and energy to create a positive reinforcement in the public safety community by launching a new program in May of two thousand and twelve, recognizing one police officer in a chosen department every three months to receive the Sergeant Earl Murray Outstanding Officer Award. This is a chosen officer by his department who has gone above and beyond the call of duty. Our officers are outstanding, regular men and women, who put their lives on the line for the safety and protection of others. They serve with valor and distinction. To recognize our heroes, our living legends, we have teamed up with the Outer Banks Trophies in Mans Harbor, creating a plaque to honor this deserving officer with. Eddie McKeever, on the behalf of the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary and Southern Shores Police Department, we would like to present you with the Outstanding Officers Award. Thank you for your time, your sacrifice, and your dedication to your job.
Just to let you know, we didn't just flip a coin and say it was Eddie. What I want you all to know is that we have, all of our officers are fine officers, and it's very difficult, but Eddie, not only does he do what is expected of him, he goes, he does go above and beyond. And I guess one of the outstanding things that I notice with Eddie is, no matter what, he always has a smile on his face. He's got cool, calm demeanor, he doesn't get excited, and that is a true asset for a police officer. Even though maybe deep down under, you wanna rip somebody's head off, Eddie is truly a professional law enforcement officer, and he is definitely deserving of that. And Becca, I think the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary also will recognize that. Thank you.
Aren't we going to have a photo op here?
My apologies, but Eddie's better half is also in the audience. If she would just raise her hand. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chief Cole. Thank you for finding these two fine additions to what I consider the premier police force in all five towns on the Outer Banks. And congratulations to Eddie McKeever. We salute you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being with us. Counsel, you have, under tab one, the, oh, we have to approve the minutes, don't we? Tab one, minutes, October the sixteenth. You've had a chance at these. Any corrections, changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of October the sixteenth. Have a second? All those in favor, aye. Oppose, same side. We have minutes. And in that connection, a question of the manager. Are the minutes posted the day after approval? Routinely?
Routinely, the day after you sign.
Yeah, thank you. The next order of business is a consent agenda, the routine report of the pickups and releases from the tax department. May I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All of you in favor, aye. Oppose, same side. Counsel, we have with us tonight Ms. Swain, our financial officer. Here she is, ready with a financial report of our operations for the first quarter. You wanna come up and face us, Bonnie? Okay.
Good evening. You have before you here the summary of the first quarter, being July through September. Normally, the first quarter is all about time, and so I have, I put a few extra inserts in there, one for the revenues and one for the expenses. As you can see on the revenue page that I gave you, the one, the Excel page, it says revenues at the top, looks like this. The overall difference between this time this year versus this time last year is pretty much the same, it's two thousand dollars less. And so basically, we're pretty much on target as to where we should be for this early in the budget. The expenditures, on the other hand, most of those differences are all about timing. For instance, I looked, some of the differences in the administration from one period to last period, from one, like, from July to August. One year, we paid the auditor in July, the next time, we paid her in August. So it's just kinda timing as to when those bills come in and when they're paid and that sort of thing. But you can see there, what I have done on the expenditure page, I did July, August, and September comparing the current period to the current period last year, and the difference of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine twenty-six, sixty-one. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand of that is due to Chickahawq and Wijgen. So basically, you know, we're pretty much on track as to where we were last year. But I just kinda wanted to break that out. As we go a little bit further along, you'll be able to see, you know, kinda where we are, but with the street projects that we have this year, that's why the numbers, you know, look like we've spent more than we did last year, but most of that is due to Chickahawq and Tewijgen. Any questions?
Yeah, I had one question, but this is about last year, which is probably silly to ask the question, but in September, under insurance proceeds, what is that? Is that something I was connected to the story?
Insurance proceeds, that's if we get payments, like, that was probably for the vehicles that were flooded, the insurance payments that we get from the insurance company.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Town plan, Mr. West Haskett?
Town planner report? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Have a brief monthly report for the month of October. For October, we had three zoning permits issued. Thirty-two building permits were issued, which consisted of one new single-family dwelling, one remodel, and thirty others. There were sixty-two building inspections conducted at thirty-eight different job sites, and the total amount of fees collected in October was five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents. Any questions?
Do you know of how many new homes we have under the contract?
I do not have an accurate number, this exact number. I would say probably around eleven, ten or eleven. I'd have to look at the, look and see what we have. There've been a few COs written the past couple weeks.
It's been growing each month.
Yes, sir. We've had around eleven, actually, for the past few months and past year, probably. Any other questions?
I have one, Weston, it's just a thought process. You remember, we, in the last year or so, we had, we wrote an ordinance and changed and modified for a, for a place in the right-hand corner where the Italian restaurant used to be, on the market, right over here?
Yes, sir.
And those people were gonna construct and do it, and nothing ever happened of that?
I've not been, I've not heard anything from that applicant regarding that proposed use.
It was that event site, wasn't it?
It was an application to amend his zoning ordinance to allow for event facilities. And I have not heard anything from him. Any other questions?
No question?
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Chief Cole, Police Department?
The report for October two thousand and twelve, some of the highlights you can see, calls for service for the total for that month were seven hundred and fifty-two. There were thirty-six of those, were foot patrols, forty-four traffic control. They conducted sixty-one residence checks and two hundred and twenty-four business checks, twenty-two follow-up investigations. Didn't have any domestics for the month of October, which was good. We investigated three motor vehicle accidents, one burglary, responded to twenty-six alarm calls, thirty suspicious person calls for service. We assisted three motorists, and we had thirteen mutual aid requests for the month of October. We had seventeen actual incidents or crimes that were reported. Some of the highlights of those were one burglary, five larcenies, two criminal damage to property, and two were drug-related. Officers made three criminal arrests. They also conducted thirty-two traffic stops. Out of that thirty-two traffic stops, five written citations and fourteen warning citations were issued. We had one ordinance violation, that was a parking citation. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see a fireman among us. Let's assume there's no fire department report. Planning Board? No report from the planning board tonight. Civic Association, Mr. Ross Mitchell is with us. Good evening, Ross.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members. The Civic Association sustained considerable amount of damage to the beach crossovers from Hurricane Sandy. After a close inspection of the all thirty-four Civic Association-owned crossovers, it was determined that sixteen out of the nineteen crossovers damaged can be repaired by volunteers. The SSCA has obtained the necessary permits from the town to repair the sixteen and are scheduled to start repairing next week. We are in the process of obtaining bids to repair the remaining three, which were substantially damaged and will require complete renovation or, you know, tear them down and build new. But we have to wait to see what the contractor say on us. I'd like to remind everyone that the Civic Association has sent out an email advising that all crossovers are closed for public use until the necessary repairs are made. We're keeping the emergency vehicle beach accesses open for those oceanfront property owners who have scheduled a beach push. We will waive the ten-day notification. However, we are requiring a certificate of liability insurance from the contractor or the homeowner and the dates of the beach push. Any questions?
Yes, what were the three that were, which crossovers?
One fifty-six Ocean Boulevard, which is Dolphin Run, one ninety-four Ocean Boulevard, forgive which, that small private road right off of that, and Twelfth Avenue. I think Twelfth Avenue is probably the worst.
The worst, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ross, does the Civic Association plan any beach pushes in Seacrest Village?
No, sir. Our portions that we have in Seacrest are probably maximum fifteen feet wide. The largest portions start from the end of East Dogwood, and at the triangle, that's where your fifty-foot-wide parcels are. So they're small. Normally, what happens is the homeowners on each side, even though we do repair, end up covering the bottom steps. So they normally pick that portion up when they do their beach pushes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Chickahawq, Chickahawq Property and Order Association. Mr. Leo Holland?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. We, of course, we don't have the same properties that the SSCA does, so we didn't experience any losses that I know of, other than the sidewalk and a tree down here on, I believe it's Trinity there. So that's still taped off as to what we're gonna do there, or how, between the two of us, how we're gonna handle that. The other thing, our people been, our nominating committee has been busy coming up with a slate of officers. John Gollitary headed up that group. And right now, we have three people on the board that will be coming off in March. So our bylaws indicate that we have to have replacements or nominees for those three plus two. So at this point, it looks like we got Kathy Krieger as a nominee, Chris Neeson, Candy Roberts, Tom Wilson, and Carlos Mercado are our nominees at this point in time. So we'll be voting on them at our annual meeting in March. And that's our, our activity. So if anybody got any questions of us, if not, thank you.
Thank you, Leo. No signups? Since there are only one, two, three, four citizens out there in the audience, two of whom have spoken, I'll give the other two citizens a chance to speak if they want Mike declines.
In addition, the folk club is having their gambler's in the morning, and Sergeant Slank will be speaking there, discussing gambling and some of the other things. So if any of you want to come, this is one of them offering you there to hear his presentation. He is head of the Civic Association CPOA, but I understand you guys have paid for it. That's your presenting. If you got time, please come. Thank you.
That's at eight-thirty, right?
Yes.
Counsel, we have under tab four a zoning, a zoning text amendment, twelve dash oh-three. This amendment comes about through problems that staff presented us, I think way back in June, regarding our outdoor lighting ordinance and the difficulty that we have in enforcing certain provisions of that ordinance. And we asked staff and the planning board to take a look at this part of our ordinance having to do with outdoor lighting, and they have come to us with a proposed amendment. And I have asked the town planner, Mr. Haskett, if he would be so kind as to lead us through this amendment and calling attention to each change that they're proposing, or deletion, whatever, and just educate us a bit on how this is going to help staff enforce this revised ordinance. So if you will... So if you will, Mr. Planner?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Town staff is proposing to amend Section thirty-six dash one sixty-six Outdoor Lighting by removing, revising, and clarifying provisions that have been a source of confusion and contradictory interpretation with respect to enforcement. If approved, the proposed amendments will provide town staff with clearer thresholds for determining whether outdoor lighting fixtures constitute a violation or are in compliance with the town zoning ordinance. The Town Planning Board unanimously, which was five-zero, recommended approval of the application and that it is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. Town staff recommends approval of the application and that it is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. And tonight, we're requesting that council set a public hearing for this application to be held on December the fourth. If you should in your packets have a copy of the proposed amendments, and I'll just go through the few changes that we've proposed. If you turn to page two, beginning on line twenty-six, you'll see that there is a strike-through of item number five, which states that light fixtures that are a source of glare by their design, orientation, or intensity are prohibited. We, as town staff, believe that this is a broad prohibition and that it cannot be measured. We feel that there should be some sort of measurable threshold that we could use. Moving down to, and you all can stop me at any time if you'd like to ask questions.
So can I stop you?
Sure.
So do you then place in this ordinance a measurable method of measuring this?
Right now, there's already a provision in there that I would get to later on that we were, that we're, we use now and we would like to continue to use in the future, which is item, new item number one on page three under Section C, subsection C, which states that exterior lighting shall not provide in excess of one-foot candle of light for or backlighting measured at the property line of any adjacent property. So we, we would like to use that threshold. That's what we are preferring and recommending that we use. When you look at item number five, which we're proposing to delete, we feel that is very broad and cannot, cannot be measured. By going with the one-foot candle used with the light meter, if we receive a complaint, we take this meter, we go to the property line, and we take measurements. And we feel that that is a clear threshold for us to use for enforcement. Moving on, down to our next proposed change is down on new, excuse me, new item number seven, which was number eight, which states that we've added a couple of strike-throughs, which states that general-purpose area and sports floodlights are prohibited except to illuminate building facades and permitted outdoor recreational uses. We would like to amend that so that it reads sports floodlights are prohibited except to illuminate permitted outdoor recreational uses. Again, as town staff, we believe that general-purpose area lights is a broad prohibition. How do you define general-purpose area lights? So we recommend that that be deleted, and we refer to sports floodlights are prohibited except to illuminate permitted outdoor recreational uses like tennis court, baseball field, things of that nature. Yes, sir?
The strike-through on building facades, what was the reason for that? So that it would not be included as being prohibited or is it no longer addressed?
Well, it's actually addressed in another section where we do allow for illumination of facades. If you turn to subsection or new number seven under section, subsection C, you see in the table there, it, it does provide for, allow for intensity levels, lighting of, and it breaks it down into categories of outdoor area uses such as parking areas, building exteriors, security, and if you'll see architectural range of average foot candles, minimum to maximum, there is, we do allow for one-foot candle of light to be used for architectural uses, which we would consider to light up a facade. So we, it is permitted in that section, so therefore by taking it out here, we're no longer prohibiting it.
Okay, architecturally, the one-foot candle, where is that measured at?
It would be measured at the, at the base where it would be measured on to the facade itself.
So what, now, now when I ask you a question, you probably can't answer. What is a foot candle of light?
A foot candle, to the best that I can describe it without going and giving a full, is a measure of light, either in lumens or foot candles. Our ordinance provides that or states that we measure or use a light meter to detect foot candles. So that is, it's a measure of light that we use based on our zoning ordinance, using a light meter, which can be, you can measure light with this meter either in lumens or foot candles.
Maybe I should change the question somewhat. And what effect does that one-foot candle have? For example, at the point where it's measured, would you be able to read the print on this page? Or, you know, what, what I'm looking for is what is the actual effect of one-foot candle on?
It's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to state, I mean, hard to put it. I would prefer to, I'd be glad to demonstrate this light meter for you, but for example, this afternoon, Town Manager and I were just, you know, using it throughout a building just to see. And when you put the sensor underneath the light similar to this on a desk like in my office, it was at one hundred and twenty-six foot candles. It was one-twenty, it was around one-twenty, around one hundred and thirty in there. So it's hard to state exactly. I mean, I can't really give you an example, other than if you'd come with me, I'd be glad to demonstrate it for you.
So when, when it lights up a facade, it's not to exceed one-foot candle on that facade?
That's the way I interpret it.
Okay. And, and how, how did, how did we arrive at one-foot candle for the lighting of this, of a facade? Is, I mean, what is the reasoning that that is the maximum limit?
I'm not sure. I do not know.
If you light a facade, I mean, one lumen is not much light. I mean, so these facade, what, and these facades are commercial and also non-commercial facades?
If you refer to the table, it just refers to it as outdoor area or use permitted. And it states building exteriors, so the category of building exteriors and subcategories, loading platforms, commercial entrances, and architectural.
If you went to our Southern Shore sign out here on one fifty-eight at night and measured that, what kind of foot candle?
I do not know.
Would you get? I mean,
I do not know. I, I can't, I can't guess that, I'm not sure.
I would argue that you get more than one foot candle.
And you're measuring reflected light?
It's the way, the way that the ordinance requires is that it's measured at the adjacent property line for purposes of whether or not it is a violation.
Oh, wait a second, so you're, you're not saying, you're, so we're changing, we, okay. So that means that if I complain and say that Southern Shore sign is driving me nuts while I see that it's light, you will then go to my property line with your meter and see what there is, what it would read on my property line?
I would go to the adjacent property line, the property line where the subject light or the light is being, you know, where the light is located, which someone is complaining about.
So would you go to, if I was the adjacent property, go to my adjacent property line and, and see what, and indeed foot candles are being dropped on my property?
If you were to submit a complaint regarding light on property adjacent to your property, that it is, that you feel it is too bright, I would go to this property and to the property line, along the property line and take measurements. Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's what we're looking at? We're not bringing anything, it's, it's what's dropping on my property at that point we're looking at?
We're trying to, yes, sir, that's, that's what we're trying to do. And that, like I said, that's what, we already have this requirement, the one-foot candle at the property line. We are, that's not something new we're proposing. That's something that's still, that's, that's there.
I understood that, I just didn't understand what, what about the facade is?
Yes, we, like I said, if you look in, there are certain ranges or certain uses that you can't exceed the one-foot candle for these uses on that property, but we're not, we still allow for facades to be lit.
The facade falls into this arch, architectural category?
I, that's, that is our interpretation, yes, ma'am.
So what we're doing here is we're separating two concepts. We're separating the concept that the, that the complaining can see a light, and that light to that person is bright, because they see it bright, as opposed to actually how much light is falling down upon their property. And there's a distinction between those two concepts.
I guess that's the way to look at it, yes, sir.
Right, so then you may complain and say that's a bright light shining in my eyeballs all the time, it's bothering me, do something about it, but you show up your little meter, lay it down the property line and say, I have the amount of light that's actually dropping down on your property is less than one-foot candle, and so you actually have no complaint. There's a difference between those two aspects of light.
I would, yes, sir, that's correct.
And that's what I've had a discussion with Wes, that's a concern I have, because a number of homes have floodlights, I guess you call them, or spotlights. And instead of, they're, they're leaning out this way as opposed to down even on their property. Now, to me, I know it could be something I could complain about, and it could be the brightness of the light, but if they're pointing them in the wrong way, it may exceed this one candle, foot candle, at the end of their property line.
Or it may not.
Or it may not. It's exactly, I raised it, but I'd still see the brightness of the floodlight, but sorry, it's bright to me, it meets the rules.
Right, this, this kind of falls back to where we feel that we need something measurable, some, a threshold, I mean, that's the whole intent.
Which falls back to commercial lighting plans.
Well, yeah, if you have commercial lighting.
Completely down to the one-foot candle, it raises down.
I'll move on unless there are some other questions. This goes down to the bottom of page two, new item number ten. We have a strike-through of the existing language, which states that unshielded, open, vertical light fixtures are prohibited. We feel, how do you define unshielded, open, vertical light fixture? It has been argued that many fixtures could be considered an unshielded, open, vertical light fixture. So we are proposing to strike through that and provide for the new language, which states that light fixtures directed towards the overhead sky are prohibited. This was discussed with the Planning Board, as far as town staff proposed to just delete, delete that, and the Planning Board felt that it was still necessary to include language, which addressed lighting of the sky, given previous initiatives to reduce light pollution, things of that nature. I forget the name of the initiative, but there was a,
Dark Sky.
Dark Sky, yes, ma'am, thank you. They, they wanted to make sure consideration was given to that effort. So that could be, there, there could be other ways of writing it if there are any comments or changes recommended for that. But the intent there is to do away with the broad statement of open, vertical light fixtures being prohibited.
Well, my only problem with this statement, which I sent out, is the fact that I don't know any of the skies other than the sky that's overhead.
That's a good point, yes, sir.
So I think it's redundant.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
I think what you've been there is you can direct a light on this angle or that, and that sky that's not directly overhead?
Well, I suppose if you just say, just sky, that eliminates exactly what you're saying. You can just say sky, and that gives you forty-five, fifty, sixty, seventy, as opposed to ninety degrees directly overhead. So it's a,
We could certainly look and consider revising that. I'll move on to page three. This is page three, line number four. This is a strike-through of number one or previous number one in its entirety, which states that all light sources shall be designed, oriented, or shielded so that light produced onsite shall be contained within the perimeter of the site. And we kind of touched on this a minute ago, as to, you know, if you see a light, it could be across a canal, it could be several, several houses down, whatnot. But we feel, town staff believes that it is difficult or impossible to physically contain light within a site. Enforcement using a light meter, using measurement of foot candles is the preferred standard, as opposed to a statement of this light is bright. You know, there's no way, we don't feel we could use that to enforce.
Unless you're measuring that at the end of the site anyway, you're measuring that at the property.
We would be measuring at the adjacent property line as provided for, yes, ma'am.
I have one other comment, this is, this is a correction, this is a minor correction.
Yes, ma'am.
Go down to nine fourteen, permitted in the table in subsection C seven.
I, I did catch that, yes, ma'am, and, and the next, and the next one as well, yes, ma'am, we have that. C seven and C seven and number three and four. Thank you. If there are any other questions, I'll move down to next page, page four. This is line, starting at line eighteen, subsection E. We are adding one small section to this statement, which addresses light fixture specifications and site plans. It states, as part of the site plans, the middle floor, we'd like to add, for all uses other than one and two family dwelling units. The design professional shall provide manufacturer's technical specification sheets describing the fixtures to be used. If you look up in subsection D above that, it states that the town shall require an outdoor lighting plan for review as part of the site plan review process for all uses other than one and two family dwelling units. So we're just trying to make those consistent, because we believe that the way it's reading now without adding that proposed language is not consistent with the intent of Section thirty-six, one sixty-six D. A lighting plan in town staff's opinion should not be required for single-family and two-family dwelling units. And that concludes our proposed changes to this ordinance. And I'd be glad to try to answer any other questions you all may have.
Could we go back to, I guess it's section four, page three, line seventeen, just explanation. I understand some of this, but floodlights shall not exceed five hundred watts, okay? When placed in a cluster, the combined wattage shall not exceed the foot candle permitted in the table, subsection seven of this section, which is beneath this over here, which seems to be totally all commercial discussion. Right, it's talking about commercial parking lots, industrial warehouses, loading platforms, et cetera. So if I have a piece of property and I throw a cluster in, I'm still, my cluster, no matter what the amount of clustering I do of the lights, has, is I can cluster all I want, as long as I don't exceed one-foot candle at the border?
That's correct. If you can, if you can stay within these foot candles within the site and not one-foot candle at the perimeter on the adjacent property line, this is, we feel this is the purpose, yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
So even though it doesn't, so even though I don't have to, I, I don't follow down here, I follow because of the fact that, I mean, on this chart, I follow because the fact is that I am limited to that one candle.
At the property line.
At my property line.
Correct, that's the way that we feel about it.
The only other comment I'd have is, and I talked to you about this briefly before, was in the minutes of the Planning Board, there was a question raised about people leaving their lights on all night. And I assume that was part of the dark sky issue discussion? We're not sure what you can do about it, but.
Yeah, there's, there wasn't much discussion on it. I would, I would state that I think it would be difficult to enforce, given hours, manpower.
But if someone, if someone would call and complain, if a citizen would call and say, this neighbor mine always has lights on all night long, blah, 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 would you go and then just check it out to see if it's, meets the one-foot candle?
We would at least go to check to make sure it meets the one-foot candle, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Let's have a couple of, one comment actually. On page two, item, line number twenty, light fixtures having a flashing or intermittent pattern of illumination are prohibited. Have you addressed or thought about seasonal lighting, like Christmas lighting and outdoor lighting for that effect? Because there are some people who do decorate, and those lights do, and if some people, you know, whether we like it or not, they flash a little bit. And also, if they're, if they're running lighting outside for that purpose, on page three, item number eleven, all outdoor lighting not located on a building shall be placed underground, which would be very difficult to do. Or, or, or is the intent of this ordinance to eliminate that kind of outdoor lighting?
Well, if you go to the intent, it states that these standards are established to provide desirable levels of lighting for adequate visibility, safety, and security, without unreasonably interfering with the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. If someone were to call and complain about seasonal lights, holiday, Christmas lights, whatnot, we would follow up in the complaint, look into it, and see if we feel it is a violation of this intent, of this, any of these provisions, or, you know. We haven't considered that, but, I mean, we would have to look at it with what we're given here. We would have to be, we'd have to consider the one-foot candle with respect to the wiring, I think, yeah, I mean, there may be something we could put in with some sort of exception, see what you're going, what you're saying there.
I'd like to, you know, I want to avoid, you know, some people who would like to, to hold this ordinance in its written form to have, you know, to make people take down Christmas lights.
We don't, we wouldn't want to do that.
Written this way, it can conceivably do that.
Yes, sir, well, we can certainly.
So this is part of the existing ordinance, this is right now, right?
Uh, what he addressed, yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, I might make a comment on that. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, we're not the only thing that's coming before you tonight from staff or the underlines and strike-throughs. What's there before, we have no, that could have been there for twenty years.
It probably has been.
Yeah, so we, y'all didn't tell us to look at all that in June, so we didn't do that.
Is it possible to correct some of the English on this ordinance?
Sure, yes, sir.
So I would like to see on page, and that's it for the entire council, I didn't send it out. I sent this, I sent this out last week to staff, but on the, on page, I guess, two line, number three, line twenty, light fixtures that have a flashing intermittent pattern of illumination are prohibited. I thought it might be interesting if we say light fixtures having a flashing or intermittent pattern versus light fixtures that have a, English-wise, I think that needs to be corrected. Line thirty-five in the same place with the, the sports floodlights are prohibited. I think maybe floodlights for illuminating sport are prohibited. I think maybe floodlights for illuminating sport are prohibited. Might be more accurate than a sports floodlight. I don't think people might know what a sports floodlight is. One that has the giants listed on it, you know, and a little placard, I don't know what you would imagine. So maybe floodlights for illuminating sport are prohibited. Might be a way to do that. And then we have line forty-one, same page, lighting of windsocks, fountains, or flags is prohibited, excepting the United States flag, state flag, official town. I thought maybe we should write, except for the flags, United States, American, Rothcon, an official flag of the town. You know, we could say, you know, they're, they're not permitted. So, I mean, instead of taking that other section out there, you have a copy of this. And then forty-five, light fixtures directed towards an overhead sky, I mentioned that about, the sky is overhead, so we can take that out. Next page, line seven, exterior lighting shall not provide in excess of one foot candle of light. Here we should write, shall not exceed one foot candle of light, as opposed to provide. And then line fourteen, principal building shall be lighted for security. I thought maybe shall be lit, might be the correct English language on that one. And number twenty-one, lighting fixtures shall be designed to withstand a minimum wind velocity of one hundred and thirty miles per hour, three-second gust. Maybe one hundred and thirty miles per hour for a three-second gust, for a three-second gust versus that parentheses, three-second gust idea. I have a copy of this sent to you, so that's what I think maybe we should correct while we're correcting everything else.
Yes, sir, we can certainly do that between now and the public hearing date if you all wish to set a public hearing for this ordinance.
Counsel, it seems to me the grammar corrections are thirteen. If you find them acceptable.
We can certainly do that, yes, sir.
Seems to me that with those corrections, this is ready to go to public hearing. And I'd like to set a public hearing on it for December the fourth. Our regularly scheduled meeting of December the fourth. And I do set that public hearing.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Wes. Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the item is, next is a review that we promised on the cemetery fund, and it is under tab five. And finance officer is going to assist me in the discussion, I think. But if you would turn to the last page under the tab, it's the page out of your, this year's audit. Exhibit three. And what generated the discussion, I believe, is the amount of funds that is currently in the cemetery fund. You'll see there under the cemetery fund, forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And that amount represents our cumulative income over years from plot sales and also contributions from a community foundation fund. So not to confuse the two funds. This is the towns fund that has accumulated this money over the years from, from various sources, really the only two being the sale of the lots and the community foundation fund. So if you flip ahead, and first of all, my apologies, I don't think that I included the entire agreement for some reason with the community foundation. But the first page of the tab is the annual letter from the community foundation explaining what the contribution to, will be to the town based on that agreement. And I'm gonna see if Bonnie can help me interpret what it means as far as principal and interest at the bottom of the letter, because I think that's where some questioning come up. This was February sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, and talks about the two thousand and twelve distribution of three hundred dollars, et cetera.
Yeah, we originally put five thousand dollars in this fund. And you can see on the, on the summary page behind that letter, it shows what the beginning value was as of January twenty-eleven and what the end balance was at December twenty-eleven. And it shows you there, you know, the interest income, which as you can see was very minimal, twenty-one cents. But the fees that they're charged, the administration fees, the management fees, and the gains and losses. So, I mean, the original five thousand dollars that was put in the fund when we first did it, I believe back in oh five, I want to say, is now at six thousand, seventy-eight, twelve. That was as of December twenty-eleven. We'll get a new total at the end of this year, December twenty-twelve.
And like, these funds are set up with the community foundation. We can only retrieve them out in an emergency. By formula in the agreement, we get annual contributions from the fund. But the corpus, the principal stays with the community foundation.
That's a question I have with Bonnie.
We cannot withdraw the principal?
You cannot withdraw the whole principal unless we go in front of the board of directors of the community foundation and present a cause why we, why that has to be done and they can do it on an emergency or distressed basis. It's not like a bank. I mean, they just won't give it to us at our request.
The question I have on the letter, down under the asterisk at the very end, it says that your twenty-twelve distribution is three hundred dollars. And then it says, your total distribution includes principal. Your fund agreement allows you to distribute up to fifty percent of your twenty-eleven gifts in twenty-twelve. And therefore, we have two hundred dollars available for distribution. But when I go to the very next page, it says the twenty-eleven donation was fifty dollars. So I'm not sure that, if you're referring to the two pieces of paper, where did the five hundred come from?
The donation to the fund means that someone made a fifty-dollar donation to the fund, is how I read it. And see, and this is the twenty-eleven summary, this was February twenty-twelve.
Yeah, but see, it says it's fifty percent of your twenty-eleven gifts. And that's, that's what I didn't understand, if the gift or the donation was fifty dollars, where did the five hundred come from?
Well, there's something, if you'll come by tomorrow, we can try to interpret that.
Can I recall, the lady at the, at the foundation, you get further to it?
Part of the discussion when this was set up was to, to try to, to put the cemeteries on a, take care of themselves. And at the same time, this was discussed, was a discussion of putting in a road. The estimate at that point was thirty thousand dollars to pay the road to put in there. So that's one of the reasons it's gotten up to this value. But I guess the question for me would be for us to investigate, should we keep it in the community foundation? If we can't pick up the principal, what's going to happen to it? I mean, I just have a lot of questions now about the, about the whole process.
Where does it say that we cannot take our money out of it?
He just said we can't take it out.
We don't have.
That's in the agreement that we enter into with the community foundation.
But it's not in our package.
I know, and I don't know why, that's my, I take responsibility for that. The agreement is not in here, sorry. But that's, that is typical of all account, fund accounts that are set up with the community foundation.
So we, so we paid them five thousand dollars, they invest that five thousand dollars, and we get back some small quantity of interest, which we're allowed to get fifty percent of, to maintain our cemeteries with? Is that what I'm getting the picture here? Is that basically the theme here?
Yes, that, the purpose of the money was to be, make a contribution to the community foundation. A portion of the income from which that fund generates comes back to the town to go towards maintenance of the cemetery, towards maintenance of the cemetery. Yes.
And then we can get out of it.
As I said, if we can show cause, the, the contract that everybody has with the community foundation does allow, is that if there's an emergency or for good cause, we can go in front of the board of directors of the foundation and make a case to terminate the account, if that's what we need to do.
You said for good cause, emergency or good cause.
Six thousand dollars is not much of a, is not a large account in their respect, and a lot of other accounts are at the foundation.
Well, there's another way we could do this, I guess, is that we could put all of the income we get from sales into the community foundation fund. Then rely on the earnings through the community foundation on an annual basis for maintenance. But I hardly think that the earnings on forty-two thousand plus what, eight thousand, six thousand, is going to be enough in this time to maintain our cemetery. If we go that route, it would take a larger contribution than the forty-two thousand we have in the fund now.
I, I just want to comment, I don't, reading back through history, I do not think that it was the intent that this fund, the community foundation would, would be the cemetery sole fund for the cemetery. I don't think.
But see, each year, we were supposedly, my understanding of it, please understand that's what it's coming from, is that we, the town, was going to put a certain amount of money in it for that purpose.
Okay.
That is correct, exactly.
Well, thank you.
That was done in oh five under a, a different manager. And that son, he told me that we sort of want to put the money, five thousand dollars in there each year.
Right.
Well, then, if that, that's kind of, that's what the mayor was just saying then, to do that with the money, and then create that fund, and that fund would ultimately be the cemetery fund.
Knowing what we know now, we just need to investigate, is that the best choice for us at this point?
The only reason behind establishing a fund like this would be the attempt to establish a self-perpetuating fund that would maintain the cemetery on into perpetuity. And if we don't fund it, you can see right, right here that it has gained more than twenty-one cents. Dividend income of one hundred and forty-seven. If you keep pulling three hundred dollars at that point, that's going to be a declining fund. We need, we need to correct that, if that's the intent.
The part that bothers me about it is that we can't take money out other than those from the donations, the way this is, the way I hear this is worded. I just think we need to look into all of that before we make that final decision.
Well, they give us a prorated share of their earnings.
But it says, if I take this letter alone, it just says, your fund agreement allows you to distribute up to fifty percent of your twenty-eleven gifts.
Yes.
That means whatever was donated that year.
So it means that Patricia Hayward gave fifty bucks, so we get a chance to get twenty-five dollars towards our cemetery. That's going to get us a lot, twenty-five bucks.
It absolutely is. As opposed to keeping it in our own funds and our own accounts somewhere.
We can continue to, we can talk to the community foundation and we can come back at budget planning time and make a recommendation on what to put in the, in the fund for the next fiscal year and.
Can, can you, can you show us a budget for cemetery maintenance over an extended period? Or can you show us what it's cost to maintain that cemetery over the last five years?
I can come up with an annual budget now, but I'm not sure about the last five years.
Yeah, because when I first started, as you remember, we used to have someone that we paid to come and take care of it. And then we did away with that, and our public works does that now. I mean, I can ask them approximately how much time they spend working the cemetery and give you a rough estimate of what it's costing us in labor, but right here.
Yeah, that's the way we do it, the labor and then a percentage of equipment, fuel costs, et cetera.
But yet we have our own forty-some-odd thousand dollar budget that's the town's budget to maintain the cemetery.
The fund, we, we haven't had a budget per se, but we, we, we created appropriations from that fund since I've been here, I think, twice. We've come to you and asked you to make appropriations from that, but we've never had an actual formal budget that you've adopted for the cemetery each year.
That would be hard to do to balance the budget because we do not know how much cemetery revenue we're going to get in a year per se. We could, it's doable because we could fund it on the revenue side with fund balance. And then, of course, that can be offset by however many cemetery plots that we sold. But we have, we've done it on an as needed basis. If something comes up like a road or taking trees out or needing more plots or that sort of thing, we have come to the council as needed with budget amendments like we did last year, but I mean.
But somewhere in our budget amount of money we possess on paper, this forty-some-odd thousand dollars that, that the cemetery has.
Yes, the audit shows that.
Nothing to do with the Outer Banks Community Foundation.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So then we're running with this five thousand down to six thousand dollar amount that's sitting here for some, a reason that we don't know ultimately what it's.
Well, Bonnie explained, I think, that in oh three.
Yeah, yeah, it was the intent of the manager that, that we had in oh five to do this every year. But that was his last budget year. We had another manager, and then he decided on it and just did not keep going.
Seems to me like our options are we let, let it ride, or we decide that we fund the cemetery maintenance in the future out of the Outer Banks Community Foundation fund. Which means we would have to put, people making donations to the cemetery can make it directly to the town though, can't they? No, that's no problem.
Anything that, when we sell cemetery lots or if they want to make donations, then it's directly to that fund.
And donations are accepted only as a, on a general basis, not for specific action. What do you think, counsel? Shall we let this, shall we let this issue ride for a while?
I think so. I like the town manager's suggestion as he's starting to look at the budget to make that a piece to look at and come up with a recommendation.
I'd like to see also if we could check this further and see whether or not we can just pull it out, end the agreement and let's not do a dual thing, just throw it into, into the forty-two thousand and forget about it. Because I don't think it really serves at this present point much of a purpose.
Can you explore that for us, Mr. Manager?
We will make a formal recommendation to Barbara and the chairman and see what response we get back.
To whom?
The executive director and the chairman. Barbara Bingham is the executive director.
Okay.
Everybody happy with that?
Thank you. Under tab C, counsel, we have a resolution, two thousand and twelve, day seven, day one, bicycle and pedestrian planning grant, and we call on our planner.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, we've had previous discussions about looking into and applying for a North Carolina Department of Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant. And one of the requirements for this grant is that we must have a resolution from the local municipality endorsing or stating that they wish, that we wish to apply for this grant, which we would submit along with the application. And also I'll note that, beginning this, this year, the two thousand and thirteen cycle, which we'll be applying for, previous years, you'd only, you could only apply for a bicycle planning grant or a pedestrian planning grant. This year, or beginning for the two thousand and thirteen cycle, municipalities with a population of under five thousand can apply for a joint bicycle and pedestrian plan. So I also wanted to tell you tonight that I think it would behoove us to apply for the joint plan. I know we previously, previously discussed bicycle plan, but I think it would be a good, a good choice for the town to try to get this grant for bicycle and pedestrian planning. And there, you should have a copy of the resolution in your package. And it refers to the. And it refers to, a couple of the findings referred to in our land use plan, where we address transportation, whether it be bicycling or pedestrian, with respect to safety, connectivity, preservation, in some cases, the environment. So, like I said, this is a part of our application that we must include upon submittal, and town staff is requesting that you all approve this resolution tonight. If you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
Any questions?
I move we approve resolution twenty-twelve, dash eleven, dash oh-one.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman LaHawn. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Thank you all.
We have it. Board of adjustment, again, we got turned, I think, to our planner.
Thank you all. Good exercise. Yes, sir.
Mr. Haskett?
As you all know, we do have a planning board and board of adjustment. There are separate members, separate memberships, and we have a vacant position on our current board of adjustment. A copy of the current members and their terms is enclosed, or you should have received in your packet. You also should have received a copy of a resume form that was submitted by a, an interested citizen and resident of the town, Mr. John Goltieri. And town staff is recommending that you all consider this application for his appointment to the board of adjustment as an alternate member. There are three alternate positions, and the vacant position that you're considering tonight is one of those alternate positions. So if you all have any questions, I can be glad to try to answer some of them for you.
That's a good question.
I'm Ed, council. I think most of it, some of us at least up here are well acquainted with Mr. Goltieri, and I certainly think he's well suited to, to function as a member of the board of adjustment.
I would agree.
Practiced law for forty years. And as you know, it's a sinide judicial board.
Correct.
I move we approve Mr. John Goltieri as the alternate, as an alternate member of the board of adjustment.
I'll second him.
With a term to expire, a three-year term?
No, sir. It's, this, this, his, this seat, this specific seat would be applying or expiring December seven, twenty thirteen.
Okay. Yeah. I so move.
Thank you.
I second him.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, managers report tonight, three major items. The damage to the town infrastructure was very minimal during Hurricane Sandy. The streets were basically never really blocked. We did implement our limb and branch contractor to remove storm items that did come out for a limited amount of days. Right now, there has been no presidential declaration for that storm as of yet for Derrick County. We have met with FEMA and Division of Environmental Management people and given them our costs that we have incurred. And also, we have given Derrick County our damage estimates for private property that was sent on to the state to be included, hopefully in any, any declaration. The major damage that we observed was in the form of walkways along the beach, and also the loss of the, the dune there that was fronting the private lots facing the beach. Currently, we have tried to get the word out as best we can that any repairs to the walkways require not only a building permit, but also a camera permit as well. Division of Coastal Management has opened an office here in this building to serve Derrick County, the entire Derrick County, for citizens who want to obtain permits, not only for repair, but also for beach pushes. A general permit was issued by the Division of Coastal Management for that. What we have going on right now on the beach is there is a lot of wooden debris. We had not started picking that up yet because of the inclement weather that was expected today, and over the next few days. Next week, at the beginning of the week, we'll be meeting with proposed contractors to look at the volume there to see what it's gonna take to remove that. So that's where we are with, with the storm at this point. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if anybody has any outstanding.
Our sand fencing has essentially disappeared throughout the length of the town. We've been doing that out of our, the money's received from the Beach Nurishment Fund. I don't suppose the wintertime is the time to put up sand fencing, is it?
It's not. We're going to get Coastal Management to come in and consult about sand fencing before we spend that money again. There is a difference in putting sand fencing on wet sand and dry sand. And as I think y'all know, that we did have some sand fencing that was on wet sand in our town. And basically, it was just serving as a fence, private fence. It was not serving any sand purpose. So if we don't spend that money, it stays in our account. So we'll have to take a look at what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it.
Because that includes plantings too, doesn't it? Fencing and/or potentially plantings.
Yes, the stabilization plantings as well.
But we did have sand fencing on dry sand.
There were some locations, yes. And I will say that some sand fencing that we paid for, the town paid for, was on private lots, which we can use the money for that, but we probably are going to look at setting up a more formal request system, much like the town, some of the other towns have, as far as private property owners requesting and then giving us permission to put the sand fencing there. It is tight now up on the, on the dune, close to their yard area. Second thing, street paving. The ongoing project for, for Deer Path, Gravy Pond, and Spindrift is on schedule. It should, it will be finished by December fifteenth, which is the contract date. This weather, today and tonight, is not favorable towards paving, but they are getting there, as you can see. And in certain locations, the stormwater enhancement areas are being developed now. So we are on schedule, very pleased with the progress so far in that particular project. The consultant engineer will be coming at the December meeting to present a revised budget for the other two streets that the council approved for rebuild or repair or repaving this fiscal year. The first being Honeysuckle and the second being Duckwood Drive. So recall that we amended the budget to pay for what we're doing right now. So there is a figure that I left in that budget that was approved for this year that is not sufficient to take care of these, so we'll have to look at that when he comes in with the revised budget. And council will need to decide how and when, and we want to proceed with that. But he'll have a revised budget in December with some design modifications as well. So he's working on that right now, and I don't have any specifics to tell you, but I have to rely on the engineer to do that. Be glad to answer any questions along those lines if I can, but that's the schedule. Did want to remind council that Sunday this year is Veterans Day. The Knights of Columbus are putting on a ceremony, not at traditional eleven o'clock time because of potential conflict with church, but there'll be a ceremony by the flagpole at one o'clock PM Sunday afternoon, and open to everybody, to the public. I did want to ask if we, mayor, Mr. Mayor, if we go into, have a recess later before a potential closed session, the videographer says he can be gone in twelve minutes if we stay away from him. Is that right, Eric? Okay. So I just wanted to mention that to y'all, that if you do recess briefly, he can be out of the room and he can be on his way.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The Tall Pine Bridge engineering company, we're gonna go back and discuss something rather regarding their contract finance, whatever.
Right.
Did they do that? Do we know what happened?
Still, still going back and forth on that. It is a three-way negotiation, DOT, Kimmelhorn, and us, and the delay happens when it gets to DOT. So... That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
You have any feel, manager, for Dominion Power getting on with the work that they have to do on Deer Path in order for us to wrap up that task?
I received copies of communications today and yesterday from Dominion and also the contractor, and it appears they've made resolution on how that's gonna be done. And my understanding is that the contractor may proceed at this point in time with doing what it has to do to relocate that line, and then we can pull the stumps. I don't have a feel for exactly when that's gonna start, but I was, I've seen the communications on that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Attorney?
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I don't have anything. Sir?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
David?
Nothing, sir.
I have nothing either.
I have nothing.
Well, we don't. Council, I move that we enter the closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, dash three, eighteen, eleven, A three, to consult with our town attorney, in the manner preserving the attorney client privilege. And we're in recess for twelve minutes.